Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please? Dr. Beard?
Yes, Mrs. Yang? Here. Mrs. Wackowski? Here. Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Dr. Khan is excused and/or arriving late. Mrs. Larson is excused, and I am present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Wackowski, seconded by Mrs. Yang. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. CRC presentation. Mrs. Yang, please.
Can you hear me? This feels like it's not on. Is it on? Okay, sorry. So, just a little preface. While I know many people would perhaps feel a bit intimidated or find it depressing to work at the Community Reintegration Center, I feel very confident in saying that the four staff members, one of whom is here, would not want to educate students anywhere else. And after attending the most recent graduation ceremony, I can also say that the students were invested in their educational experience, were personable, engaged, and ready to move forward with their lives in a positive fashion. In other words, they were students that Franklin School District should be proud to call our own. Today, we have Mr. Isaiah Rembert. He's a cross categorical teacher. He's in his third year with the district. Also want to acknowledge Michelle Pink. She's an educational assistant in both the CRC and Franklin High School. She is in year one of her tenure. Ms. Mila Acosta is a school counselor. And if you care to be impressed, read her bio, her profile on the website. She's been with the district since 2023. She was a high school counselor. She was an SEL administrator, an elementary school counselor, and also has a certificate in substance use disorders, as well as a master's in counseling. Todd Serpik has been with the district for 26 years? That's what, okay. He's been a special education teacher, has supported grades nine through 12 math classes, along with biology and physical science. He's also an advisor for the Eco Club and Best Buddies. And then, Mr. Joey Jonas is the associate principal at Franklin High School and oversees the staff at the CRC. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Rembert and Mr. Jonas.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. That was great. And Todd was going to join us, but he is with the Eco Club tonight, so we're doing that. So that is actually what he's doing. We have one of their first activities as a club outside of school time, so that's ridiculous. And so, we're very thankful to be here tonight and share a little bit about the work at the CRC that the staff does. They're a very accomplished staff. They've done a nice job of adjusting every year and continuously improving to meet the needs of the students that they work with. We do so under the mission and vision that you see here. And just to bring attention to you in a key term for words, when you're in that space, it is a space where the students feel a sense of belonging. That's no different than the goal we have at high school or any other classroom in our district. And the students there are welcomed. They want to feel that they belong and that their learning will be done in a nurturing way. And Isaiah and his team do a great job of that. Additionally, continuing to look to exceed what they believe is their potential, we're matching that teaching and learning vision that we have for all learners in our district with, through the extension of our students at the CRC as well. So continuing to live under some of those same values and that mission and vision. And then, if we go to the next slide, just to highlight some of the work that was done last year, still in the early stages of 25, 26, so you can expect more data as we go throughout the school year. But continuing efforts around not only graduates, but engagement in school. We know that even engagement for a small amount of time will be beneficial. When Isaiah works with a student, even for a day or two before they're in Milan, that's still going to provide benefit to that student, provides them connection. And a lot of what you hear tonight is, there we go, is some work around how we support students as they leave the CRC and exit back into life. And so, what we can do, regardless of graduation status or not, will be increased when we can work with students. So when we see data that shows we're working with a higher level of students, or higher number of students, I should say, that's impactful. And last year, able to get consistent staffing with Todd at the CRC in the second half of the year, full-time consistently, after able to fulfill his position at the high school, really allowed for an increase in second semester. And Isaiah could probably share more about how we're recruiting already at the beginning of the year now to try to get as many students in the classroom as we can, especially after that summer lull, trying to get students back in as soon as we can in fall as a goal. We've also partnered with MPS, building connections with their staff. And Isaiah will share a little bit more about that, but that helps with recruitment and also that communication and efficiency to support the students. So our building goal, we're continuing to work on this into the 25, 26 school year, and it drove a lot of the work for last year as well. But looking at creative ways to maximize credit attainment, you'll hear a little bit about the how in those ways and how we can be creative to do that. We want to help students individually. So much of what a student needs in the CRC is personalized, so it's a challenge for Isaiah and his team to do, but they meet that challenge. Really think through how they get to know the student, really meet SEL needs, meet the needs that they have as they transition into that space, whatever from the previous days or day brought them to that, get them to a place where they're ready to learn and then help them learn, and then instill that passion for learning so that when they leave the classroom, the learning doesn't stop. Often, students are able to do work outside of the classroom and bring that in to really accelerate credit. They don't do that unless they have adults that believe in them, and Isaiah and the team do instill that belief in them. And again, more around how this goal is being met from the prior year and then into this year as well in the coming slides. And I'll turn it over to Isaiah to speak to that a little bit.
All right, absolutely. So one of the things that our students have always stressed to us is that need for long-term support when they reenter society, particularly as it relates to social, educational, and vocational supports. And one of the ways we do that is through a partnership with MPS. So we have a strong partnership with Milwaukee Public Schools through a dedicated central office worker that collaborates to ensure that any MPS student currently incarcerated in Franklin has the opportunity to enroll in Franklin Public Schools and complete their high school education. Through that reliable connection, eight former MPS students have successfully enrolled and graduated with us. Many of these students arrive having already completed over three years of coursework, and this partnership provides a pathway for them to finish their education and earn their diploma. This partnership also allows for a smooth transition back to MPS, as most of our students are MPS students, and if a student, when a student is released. So we're able to figure out school interest before they're released, and a school social worker is able to help enroll them on the information we gather from our students. Another big thing we've been working on is our toolkit and our mentorship. So whether through graduation or reentry, students who exit our program are required to complete a comprehensive reentry plan. And that's designed to help them navigate life on the outside and hopefully to prevent and reduce recidivism. So another thing our students have expressed is that need for ongoing mentorship to keep them engaged. So as part of this process, we've established relationships with key individuals and organizations, including, but not limited to, Mike Lozano of MATC, who is also formerly incarcerated, and our very own athletic director, Cordell Smith. Another thing we're excited to be working on is we've secured a DOJ grant in partnership with DPI, and that will offer mentorship and other wraparound services to address the unmet needs of formerly incarcerated youth. This collaboration is particularly beneficial for our special ed population, who really does struggle to develop marketable skills and secure gainful employment upon reentry. Next slide, please. So one of the things we're really proud about is the number of graduates we've had in the last three years. So in the 2022, the 2023 year, we've had seven graduates. 23, 24, 11. And 24, 25, we've had 27 graduates, which is huge. That's, we're really proud of that number. And just to share with you guys a little bit about our recruitment process, what that looks like. So for us, our recruitment process is a year-round process. So at the start of each year, we visit the dorms to identify students that are interested in enrolling. Referrals also come from program sergeants in our MPS partnership or by word of mouth from current students. So we intentionally keep numbers smaller than in the past to provide more one-on-one support, which has also contributed to the increase in graduation rates. So one of the things that we've kind of struggled with is because we're an alternative education program in a detention facility, our capacity to find meaningful elective opportunities is, has been limited. But one of the things we're really trying to focus on is expanding our elective course offerings through internal and external partnerships. So for example, this summer, we had a storytelling workshop with X Fabula, which was really awesome. And our students were able to earn English credit for that. And for example, a lot of our students actually participate in our local Shakespeare prison project. So just trying to find other avenues for us to increase those opportunities for our students so they can have more of a typical or traditional high school experience. And then, our continued focus on SEL. This is more of Mila's wheelhouse. However, since she couldn't be here, I'll cover this part as well. So our SEL goal focus is beyond credit attainment. So while earning credits and graduating our important milestones, SEL equips students to envision a successful reentry into society and reduce recidivism. We emphasize self-care and development, long-term care, long-term career and education goals. So by aligning SEL and state standards and tying it directly to credit attainment, we help students see both immediate success in school and sustainable pathways for life after incarceration. So with that, I'll leave it there because I wanted to leave time for questions that we can answer. Oh, I forgot. So we also had some quotes, really proud of our quotes and our students, and they talk about their experiences. So it was a quote, some quotes from our students. Says, "I was able to graduate. It was hard because I'd been trying to get my diploma for a long time. I learned new things I did not know before. I thought that I would never finish school. Most days, when I wanted to quit, the staff wouldn't let me." Guilty. "I had to push myself to get work done." And last one, "Even though I am in a rough environment, we can always push forward and get our goals done."
And our thought there was, we can't bring our students to this board meeting, but often a school report would. So we wanted to bring their messages and their words to it. And then, the last slide as well has some of those words of encouragement that they share after they graduate, so as they're at their graduation.
That's a really meaningful part of this work to me, is just hearing from those who graduate and finding ways for them to encourage our current students. That means a lot, not only to us as staff, but also to other students that are there. So one of those quotes says, "Keep trying, don't give up. I was once where you are, and I thought I couldn't do it. It's not possible," pardon me, "it's not possible if you put your mind to it. It's not impossible if you put your mind to it. No matter where you are in life, it's never too late to get on the right track, but the only person that can get you there is you. So believe in yourself. Never give up. It can be hard at times, but it can be done. Stay focused and don't give up. It's all on you." And just to close, I would say again, like I couldn't be more proud of our students. Many of them often tell us that this is the first positive school experience they've had in their whole academic career. We've gotten so many beautiful letters from former students that continue to stay in contact with and tell us how meaningful this work is that we do in the program. So with that said, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody? Andy, please.
Thank you for your time. As always, impressive work, and you continue to grow the program every year. So I hope you're proud of yourself because we are proud of you. I'm just curious, how many, is there a community of peers that you are able to call on who are doing work similar to yours? And if so, what lessons have you learned from them and/or what lessons have you been able to impart to them? Or are you sort of forging a path completely on your own?
So honestly, the best way I can answer it is yes and yes. There is a community of peers, because every year, we have the, I can't remember exactly what it's called, but it's Wisconsin Correctional Education Association has a conference. And I went this last year, and that's always been very nurturing for us, just to hear the stories, understand what the latest practice is in correctional education. So that's been wonderful. One of the things we've been talking about with our team is actually starting to present at one of those upcoming conferences, because I do believe, even though we get a lot, I also think we could give a lot to those conferences. So you know, it's a niche, but I found that we do a pretty good job, and we are at least doing whatever the other correctional education associations or institutions are doing. But we, it's a niche. There are a few of us, but there are definitely others.
And even in-house, there's teaming with MATC because students can receive MATC credit, so they're just right down the hall, so we can learn a little bit about what they're doing in-house, too.
So what is the capacity of, or how many are there that we, how many are in our program?
So those are, those are different questions, right? So in our program right now, I believe we have currently enrolled, there are about 40 students that are enrolled. We could probably, in terms of eligible students, I would say there's probably, I would say roughly 60 or 70 eligible students. But the thing is, because our students are adults, they can choose whether or not to enroll, come to school, or to enroll in school. And as a recruit, that's one of the things we ask them is, first of all, have you already earned a high school diploma? And then, you know, how old are you? And if they meet the age criteria, and if they've not earned a high school diploma, then they're ours. So we can't meet, we don't currently meet the need of entirely, the entire need of all of our people who could be eligible, but unfortunately, or fortunately, they have that free will to decide whether or not they want to come to school because they're of age.
How long have they been with us typically?
That is the most difficult, most challenging part of the job, because you build these relationships, strong relationships and meaningful relationships, but we have no idea how long they're going to be with us. We have students, some students are with us for as little as a week. We have students, some students are with us for a couple of years. And it just all really depends on their cases, what that looks like. Some of them are transferred up north, some of them are released, and some of them stay with us for a little while.
They're all with you?
Correct. Yes, yes. So we do have, to speak to a little bit more, we do have some 17-year-olds. Most of the 17-year-olds are actually either downtown or at Vell Phillips. Those are 17 to, I think about 14 are either in Vell Phillips or 14. I'm sorry, 14 to 17. However, we do have a couple of students who are 17 at the CRC right now. And they are part of Huber, so they get work release and school release. So the 17-year-olds we have right now are continuing to get their education in Milwaukee Public Schools through Huber. Welcome.
Just, I'm sorry, because this question comes up a lot. So more than half of the students generally have IEPs, which means they're eligible for service till age 21. So that's why that age cutoffs matter. We service kids with IEPs till age 21, so that, I don't want to say that changes the rules, but they're under a different set of rules. And more than half, maybe even pushing 60%, I haven't looked recently, but for sure half, so.
Yeah, I would say that's fair.
Yeah, have IEPs, so they'd be eligible for service till 21.
Oh, absolutely. You know, we, absolutely. Definitely implement whatever IP they have, and then we revise it and for whatever their needs are at the moment.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll move on to community comment. I didn't see anybody signed up. Mr. Jonas, is there any cards in that?
Card in the basket?
Can you make comment? Basket?
None that are filled out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, I know you came in late. Did you want to say something tonight?
Thanks.
Welcome. Good to see you again. All right. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Wackowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School Board Calendar. Board Policy Committee meeting Tuesday, September 30th at the ECC at 10:00. Homecoming Parade is Wednesday, October 1st at 5:30, near the high school. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, at the ECC at 6:00, and also October 22nd at the ECC at 6:00. District Administrator update, Dr. Bennett, please.
All right. Good evening. So a couple of updates this evening. First, congratulations to a few board members that are going to be recognized October 2nd for their professional development award-winning at the WASB or through WASB. So, and Mrs. Sapersky for Level 3, Dr. Beard for Level 2, and Mrs. Yang for Level 1. So that's the regional meeting that takes place October 2nd, will also be recognized in that. So thank you for continuing to grow with WASB. The Education Foundation this Saturday is hosting a glow run. This is the first time they're hosting a glow run. It'll be held at Forest Park on our property. So registration or check-in starts at 5:30. You can register ahead of time. It's open to anybody in the community. They have a whole variety of glowing items and vendors that'll be there. It's been fun to watch Lika Dhani pulling together everything as she's working hard to hit this event off the ground. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of people there. It's a competition between schools also, so staff at the winning school can get a lunch and a special treat for the students during an upcoming assembly. So looking forward to that. Kind of replaces the run that they did at Kayla's place, oh, sorry, Kayla's Playground last year. Congratulations to our marching band. They hosted the Sabre Invite last Saturday, so there were many challenges, which I'm sure some board members could tell us about, moving indoors with weather, but it sounds like it went off well, and that's a big, that's a big lift for the whole crew and the parents and everybody else helping out. Next week's Homecoming Week, so that's celebrated across the district and newsletters. You'll see a variety of dress updates going on at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. President Sprague talked about the parade on Wednesday at 5:30. Don't be late, you'll miss it, but it's real quick, down 50 first, finishing at the high school. Then we have some powder pop football going on. And then, the football game Fridays against Kenosha Trepper next Friday, I should say. For that, at 6 o'clock, they'll also have a Hall of Fame induction prior to that game next Friday. Speaking of athletics and activities, the marching band invites, the big activity that was going on, most of our clubs and things don't start up for about a month yet, once we kind of get later in fall into winter. But sports are well underway. Football's in first in the state at the moment. They play undefeated Kenosha Bradford this Friday. Swim won the conference relays last week. Gulf is going to compete for their 12th straight conference championship. Girls volleyball is in second, plays off against the first player, plays the first-place team this coming week. Boys volleyball's in first, along with boys soccer in the conference. So a lot of really successful things going on with our athletes. That's exciting for our community. Standings for boys and girls cross-country tennis are always harder, those kind of post results and scores later in the season, different than other sports. So a lot of excitement at the high school, and we'll see everybody out with the homecoming from there next week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, School Board Liaison Reports. Please.
I met with Mr. Volo at the high school, as that is my liaison school. We met last week and had a great conversation, learned a little bit about their goals this year. One kind of overarching theme is around literacy and what they're doing to kind of reach some new different levels with literacy. We talked about their, they did some testing earlier than they have before to kind of get some baseline information for students so they can more specifically tailor instruction and things like that this year to kind of meet those needs. So that was an exciting thing. Then we went out and visited classes, and I'm just always impressed. I remember being a student in school, and somebody, you know, asked you a question, and you maybe were like, I don't know. We walked into a classroom completely unannounced, unprepared, and every single kid that we talked to was able to give a completely coherent, really exciting talk about what they were working on. And I just was really impressed with that, with our students, that, you know, in the second week of school, they could speak so clearly and passionately about the work that they were doing. So just a really fun day, always fun to go see students in classrooms. So that's my high school report.
Thank you. Let the records show that Dr. Khan arrived at 6:23. Anybody else? Board Liaison Reports or School and Community Engagement Reports.
Quickly, I did the consignment sale and then spent the better part of the day watching a master inaction of Mrs. Sapersky, just manage weather-related issues with invitation with aplomb and grace and just excellent day, even despite the weather. So kudos, kudos to.
Thanks, Mary. It was a team effort, definitely, and a real Sabre pride, see the community come together. So.
All right, thank you. Reports, presentations, and other board business. Seclusion and restraint report. Mr. Ekman, please.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. I am starting, I have two reports tonight. I think this is working. The first report is the annual seclusion restraint report. I'm going to share a few comments about the report and then take questions. So first of all, this is last year's data, so the report covers our instances of seclusion restraint from the previous school year. This is annual report required by DPI. We're governed by Wisconsin Act 118, which went into effect in March of 2020. And so, the reporting requirements are that we report the information to the local school board, as well as to Wisconsin DPI. And DPI has increased the reporting requirements and the visibility to seclusion restraint for the purpose of hoping to limit its use, because we're required to report to parents, local government, and also the state. So that's the theory of action the state has in terms of trying to address this issue in schools. The report covers under the history situation, not only the reporting requirements, but some of the other requirements in the law that we've had to meet through the changes several years ago. So there's definitions in the report. And then, also important to share some of the steps we've taken to try and mitigate the use of seclusion restraint in our schools. This is a good year for numbers reporting. If you've seen the trends, it does go up and down, but we're optimistic about some of the work we've done with the Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Course. We've been training that more widely with three trainers. We have three staff members that have been trained in teaching that course. There are student services professionals, instructional coaches. And we've been able to train educational assistants, teachers, special education staff, and student services staff. So we've really increased the number of staff we've been able to train. We also have worked with some consultants and worked on improving our process of functional behavior assessment and behavior intervention planning for students that have some behavioral needs. The idea is that if we are proactive and teach skills to students and also work with staff to be proactive, then we can reduce the instances of seclusion restraint. And additionally, we've had a district-wide focus this year on teaching self-management and self-regulation skills. We launched that work in early August at our Leadership Summit, and each school has a goal through their improvement plan, through their sit team, to help focus on teaching and addressing those needs for students. And it seems to be off to a good start. So that's some of the work we're doing in this area that I wanted to make sure to highlight, and I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. I just want to thank you for the proactive approach we're taking to not just, not just to teaching, training people to try and stop these things before they happen, but the, I noticed the first edition of the newsletter for special education students, we're being proactive in a lot of ways, which is what special education families asked us, and really all our families asked us to do. So I appreciate the communication. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to Health and Nursing Report with Ms. Yang and Ms. Plowes, please.
Okay, so a few colleagues that have joined me. Why don't we start with introductions? I think you know me at this point. I'm Leo Ekman, Director of Student Services. I'll let our nurses introduce.
Hi, I'm Laura Plowes.
I'm Chong Yi.
And we are here to present the Health and Nursing Services Report. And I'll just kick things off with a few remarks from the Board Situation Report. The Health and Nursing Services Report, again, this is last year's data, so you'll notice that it covers the activities and the data that's collected through our health program that's run by Laura and Chong. And they do a lot. And you can see that there's a lot of different information in the report. So this does kind of provide a scope, an overview of what our health program covers. It's highlighting some of the key interventions and assessments that we're. It's highlighting some of the key interventions and assessments that were, that are in place in our schools. And it does kind of give an overview of what are some of the medical and health-related needs that our students have that our health team is caring for on a day-to-day basis. So as you might imagine, the health programs evolved over the years. In recent history, we don't need to revisit, but there's just been different asks over time for the health team in the schools. And, and that's, that's raised the bar in terms of expectations from, from school staff, from the board, from the community. And so the report gives visibility to what we're doing to address health needs in the schools. But in a sense, what I'm trying to get at is it's really broadened what, what we're, what we're being asked of as, as schools in terms of caring for kids with health needs. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Laura and Chong to highlight a few key points for the board, and then we'll go from there and take some questions.
Yep, so I just want to say that our district, our students are generally very healthy. We do have some sick kid that comes in, obviously with the season changing too, but everybody is pretty healthy and relatively stable. The scope of health needs continuously evolve from high severity, even sometimes even low. So we kind of get a variety of, in, from low to high. School nurses, as Laura and I, we aid in evaluating and guiding unique diagnosis from families. We get new things every day and it changes all the time, so we can't be set on just saying, hey, today we're just gonna focus on one diagnose. It's always changing, so we are ready to handle and support students and teachers and staff in that.
One of the diagnoses that we are seeing more and more of, and it's becoming more prevalent, is the diabetics. And we just want to highlight that they do require a significant level of nursing support. And even though it's a delegated task that we give to our helpers and office assistants and aides, it is one that we are routinely being asked for to continually evaluate. And we kind of project that that's just gonna continue to grow as the years go on.
So in addition to diabetes, we also handle concussion, so we always know that sports are always really active. We're great in that in this district, but we do get a lot of concussion that's sports-related. I would say that it's usually primarily seen in secondary level, so high school is our number one hit there, which I deal with a lot. I communicate with the athletic trainers, they communicate with me, I communicate with parents and then students along with all the staff to make sure the accommodations are matched there. In addition to that, our critical role is addressing and managing emergency response, so we do have emergency response team for each building. And also in ACC here, we train them at the beginning of the school year and then we do drills with our fire department two times a year.
And although a lot of what we handle is a known condition, we do see a lot of unknown conditions. But one of the ways that we help our known conditions is we are continually seeing IEP meetings and 504 plans that we do go with those families and we report a medical update on that. And we just make sure that we reach out to the families, get the most up-to-date information so that we can pass it on to all the levels of speech therapists, teachers, all of that.
And then with that being said, also, it kind of just wraps around as a big circle, we train our staff when new things come up, and even if it's not anything new, it's always a good reminder that we train our staff with like everything at all times. So at the beginning of the school year in August, we plan with all our health room staff, whether they're office staff or they're trained to be in the health room at all times, health room training, and then we go and spend time with them every day. We, we try to at least be in the health room at least once a day, even for like 30 minutes to an hour, especially with how big our district is here, we can't spend all day. But always calling, emailing, checking up on them, and making sure we're available to answer and support them as anything comes up.
So before questions, I just want to take, I don't want to forget to share this with the school board, I just want to make sure to, that I communicate a very high degree of confidence that I have in Lauren Chong. I count on them for ongoing communication with the staff in the health room and with me and with our medical advisor. They may, they connect a lot of dots in our system. I just want to make sure that I communicate my confidence in the work that they're doing.
Thank you, Leo.
Andrew, please.
Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for the report. Two questions, one, I know last year we had a spirited discussion on the nature of severe food allergies, and I just noticed that last year that there were no incidents of severe food allergies reported. Can you comment on how that was achieved, or was it just a lucky year?
I would say it's just a lucky year. I think it's just a lucky year and we hope that it will just continue to be like that. We do stress the fact of allergy plans, so our health plans, when parents send that in, as soon as they get it to us, we do put it into power school and send it out in communication to all the teachers.
And I think every level of education, so elementary, middle, high school, they're really starting to become more aware and realize that it is just an ongoing issue. And so I know on the elementary level, there's just so many factors of making sure that the tables are cleaned, kids are washing their hands to avoid any sort of cross-contamination. And so I, I feel like the more knowledge we put out there, we're trying to kind of lessen the risk of what these kids could be exposed to.
Thanks, my second question has to do with the data set you provided regarding the number of office visits per each school. And I'm wondering if you can address sort of just the theory of the case of why decreasing the number of office visits is a good thing or a goal?
So obviously we want to keep our kiddos in the classroom as much as we can, and so there is a big discrepancy on some of the office visits from a school-to-school profile. One of the themes that we have really tried to enforce this year is letting teachers know what their comfortability should be with keeping the kids in the classroom. So, so for example, sometimes we have kids come and they just have a bloody hand nail, and it's like, we're trying to prevent that from being a health room, like evaluation where they can wash their hands in the classroom. All elementary classrooms have sinks, so we're providing the Band-Aids to hopefully prevent them from having to leave the class, come to the health room, possibly take up time from a student who might be a little bit more severe. So that's one of the ways that we're trying to reduce some of the health room visits every day. And so far, we've gotten pretty positive feedback from the teachers, I know we're only like a month in, but they're feeling more of, oh, I didn't realize that we could do that in the classroom. So I think just providing that education and making sure that they're comfortable and knowing how to do a mini triage in their classroom will keep them in there.
Linda, please.
So I just, I identify a lot of staff in the, in the health room.
So they're part of our nurse subpool, and so anytime that we need additional help with just having two nurses in the district, some of our students require nurses to go on field trips with them. And so then we would kind of take in one of our subpool nurses, if they have the availability, to go on that field trip or go on that activity so that Chon and I can hopefully stay in the district where we're, where we're needed to. So that's more on that level of, that they're in our subpool.
Also, they will support in case one of our staff members absent unexpectedly, they will jump in and help and support the health room.
Please.
Are you involved with the rec department at all, or are you some, you're involved with the four AM students here, are you at all?
Yep, so we are involved in the recs department. I help facilitate the AM Kids Club and the PM Kids Club, so that every, they call them Kids Club Supervisors. They get a list of every kid that has a health condition so that they know what to, what to expect if a kid potentially has a reaction to something. It is not affiliated with our school in the sense that they have access to our health rooms, so it would be up to the parent to still provide, you know, any of the emergency medication they may need, that they give one to the kids' club as well as our health room.
Mary, please.
I just have, wondering if you could elaborate on the Student Wellness Committee, it sounds like a fabulous undertaking, and just a couple sentences here, I wonder if you could elaborate on what, what they do and how they, the focus is on maintaining physical wellness of students, what does that look like?
I would say for right now, we are still working on that Wellness Committee. We're always here welcoming students, greeting them, and making sure they're, they know like we are a safe place in the health room to support them in that way.
Andrew, please.
You know, with 25 students in the district with diabetes, especially the younger, in the, in the elementary school, who are sometimes new to the disease, do you guys have any contact with the parents about possibly? Most of the time, the younger students are not already on the pump because they, they prefer, the physicians prefer, and Angie, I think, I have seen that most of the pediatricians prefer the younger kids to take the insulin and only when you are more little bit mature, middle, middle school and understand, then go to, you know, a pump, like a device. Have you guys seen any change in the, like more and more students are getting on a pump, even at an earlier age, and if they are, then are you, in collaborating with the parents, able to monitor their devices? Because sometimes young kids, you know, what is my number and, you know, to avoid any episodes of hypoglycemia as such.
I would say that the new regimen is that kids are getting transitioned to the pump a lot sooner than they have in the past. Of all of the elementary-level diabetics, all of mine are on a pump. So really shy away from that typical injection before meals or injections just to do a correction. So yeah, I haven't seen really anyone without the pump unless it's a brand-new diagnosis, and then they wait usually like a six-month transition period, and then they're going to the pump. And so in your other question, they do have the technology now that there's a follow app that parents can give us the right to follow. And so every health room has a tablet that if parents give us permission to use, then we monitor the kids' numbers. And so it's one of those that we do try and partner with the family to know highs and lows and see how we can kind of prevent a low from happening or vice versa. So it's definitely a evolving system and it's continually kind of keeping us on our toes. But yeah, it's something that I think we're gonna see more and more pumps.
Yeah, and I would say that in the secondary level, even though we do have the tablet that keeps like, if parents give us the rights to follow, we do promote, at least for me, because I do middle school and high school, I promote a lot of independency. So I push parents and students to be really independent and preparing them to actually like, when they graduate, to not rely on us too much and like trust them and encourage them to do that.
Thank you.
Anne, please.
I just want to say thanks for all you're doing. I have listened to this report for a number of years and every year I'm just awed and amazed at everything that you guys do as a nurse myself. I've never had 200 patients in any one given shift that I've worked. And so just the, the scope of what you guys are doing and all the different talents that you have to use of your own to manage all these things, manage the communication, manage the diagnoses, the treatments, the trainings. I just want to shout out again from the rooftops how grateful we are for you and all that you're doing, and thank you for taking care of our students.
Thank you.
Mary, please.
As a parent of a daughter who struggled mightily with anxiety, had hospitalization and what have you, I know mental health isn't alleviated here in any form or fashion, but does that compromise, I mean, comprise any substantial amount that kids come to the health room? I mean, or do they know that's a place they can go, if they're feeling anxious, depressed, other mental health?
I guess I can chime in on that a little bit. We, just to remember that we have other student services professionals available that have training and are available to see students with mental health concerns. But Lauren Chong, do get visits, as you can see in the data, get regular visits that are consistent with what you're describing, Mary. But yes, our students are looking for adults to connect and support them when they have a need, and mental health does show up in the health room, and mental health needs, student needs show up in the health room.
I would say to answer that too, for the secondary, they're kind of middle school, so six, seven, eight, they kind of don't know where to go yet, but they just know that they need to go to the health room because they're not feeling good. So they come to us, if they're crying, we know how to properly assess them, and then from there we'd be like, do you want to talk to your counselor or find someone else that can actually address that? But obviously if it's medical related, we'll be doing that.
And then in the elementary level, I'd say the health room visits are more of a frequency. So if we're noticing, noticing an uptick in the same student, always coming in with a stomach ache or always coming in with some sort of ailment that let's say happens to be during math, then we're, it makes us take a deeper dive to say, what else could be going on here? And then that's when we would reach out to some of our other peers to say, hey, we're really noticing that this student is coming in, we're potentially seeing like an anxiety level here, where either we can alert the parent or like our peers would kind of take over at that point to say, these are the trends that we're noticing.
Thank you, thank you everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move on to Board Policies, Personnel 3000s, Community and Recreation 4000s, Finances 6000s, Community Relations 9000s. This is an action item, Mrs. Sipursky, please.
Thank you. So our committee, our policy committee met a couple weeks ago, we had a couple hours of discussion around all these policies, which I'm sure you've all read in detail. And we feel that they are ready to be approved, so we're just looking for a motion to preliminarily approve the policies. As you recall, we will bring all the policies, all these batches back together for a final approval in February.
I just to get the motion up, oh. I moved to preliminarily approve Personnel 3000s, Community and Rec 4000s, Finances 6000s, and Community Relations 9000s.
I second that.
Thanks, Max.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Dr. Khan, further discussion. Mary, you got a question?
I just had a quick question under the Personnel, and I can't remember which one it was, but it was something about staff, and there was a point system for having people come in pedagogic and technical, is that our, is that DPI's rules, or is that something that we came up with as a district?
No, it's not district-specific, it's the address.
Okay.
I'd like to bring up policy number 621, which is the financing area for budgeting compensation. And I know we discussed this quite a bit in our interview regarding budget control and like overspending, what that means. And I did do a little checking in our audit report, and I noticed that there is language consistently in our audit report that says, the legally adapted budget and budgetary expenditure control is exercised at the two-digit sub-function level in the general fund and at the function level for all other funds. Reported budget funds are as originally adopted or as amended by school board resolution. And I just feel that that as a policy belongs in that question, says it is back what we are being argued about. So I suggest that maybe we take that back, we're going to discuss it for a later this time, and maybe we can take that up again.
Which number are you talking about, 6231?
Right.
And which document are you reading from, Linda?
I'm reading from an audit report. I think it's pretty consistently in all of our audits, I'm reading the audit report in the June 30th of 2024 on page 39, under Budgets and Budgetary Accounting, is where I read that information.
This is fairly.
Please.
This is a fairly broad policy, and so I'm wondering if you could help, help me to understand what part of the policy you're specifically asking to amend?
I'm just asking you to add what is currently stated in our audit report and what, is what our budget control is. I want specifically to know what, what, how we can do it, that's my.
I guess I feel a little bit like the policy as written does that already?
I don't think it quite captures the, the way it's in the audit report. It's very clear at what level the control is at, and it's, it's our policy, that applies to being audited, so why wouldn't we?
This one's driven off the statute, I mean, Richard brought that off when we did our committee meeting too, so I think at this point it's, if there's, you know, a second to pull it out of the packet, it's probably move on these and make a motion to pull that out of the packet. If there's more board interest to look at adjusting the language according to an audit. Audit has to come to the board annually anyways, so you're still going to get that report, whether it's in a policy or not, because that's. whether it's in a policy or not, because that's, you approved a different policy that talks about DPI-required reports and bring them to the board. Audit is one of those that's required to be reviewed by the board annually.
What is this in the audit report? This is about budget control. That's what...
Agreed. I'm just saying, you'll have that anyways because you've already approved a policy saying audit will come to the board annually and... The language you're talking about is in the audit, Linda?
It is an audit report, but it's about the legally adapted budget and what that means. That's what the subject matter is of this language. I know it's in the audit, but it's not about the audit, it's about controlling the budget.
Did anyone else, does anyone else want to pull 6231 out from the approved packet for further review?
I mean, it's in our audit report. So it's, it's referenced, the legally adapted budget, why wouldn't that be in our policy? What does that mean?
But that's because our...
This is based off state statute. That's why it's not in there. So you'd be adding language specific to just a want in the framework of the school board, and you would still get the audit report because it's required by DPI annually, and you've already preliminarily approved a budget or a policy that requires us to follow DPI requirements. So you could add it like any policy?
It seems redundant.
I can do this, clarify.
Thank you. All right, any, anything further? All right.
So are we saying we're not interested? Is that what we're saying? I want to hear what you're thinking here.
I'm, I'm not, I've...
You made a motion, you made a motion, and you made a motion, I think.
Not even a motion, you...
All right. So there's a motion to approve the policies, and you...
I would suggest that we pull this one.
And no one has agreed with it?
Well, thank you for support. Let's move on.
All right, motion was made by, the motion was, there's a motion that was made and seconded. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Treasurer's Report is available in the Board Docs library.
I do have a question.
Please.
So I'm wondering how we handle purchase card transactions? Do they, was it separately reported? How's that handled?
In terms of that report, so that is only pulling checks. Purchasing cards, those do not funnel through Skyward like an individual purchase. So we get a US bank upload. We attach all of our receipts to it, but it only comes up in Skyward as US bank.
So just one transaction?
Yes. All right, future agenda items. Forest Park Middle School presentation, Community and Recreation Department report, preliminary budget review, Wisconsin School Board Recognition Week, WASB 2025 Business Honor Roll, Spring 2025 Early College Credit and Start College Now Request Approvals, 25-26 Staffing Update, Budget Approval and Tax Levy, New Courses, Board Policies Program 2000s, and District Administrator Goal Setting Closed Session. And I'm looking for a motion to enter closed session pursuant, excuse me, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C, District Administrator Goal Setting. Info, 19.851D, District Safety Plan and Goals Review and Threat of Violence Drill Review. Action and conferring with legal counsel with respect to litigation, 19.851G Von Bresen. Info. Motion was made by Mrs. Yang.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. We need a voice vote, please.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Yang?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes 6 to none.
Thank you. We are in closed session.
Time?
At 6:53. Thank you. All right, the board, the board took no action during closed session, but we do have a couple of items to vote on.
I am, I move to approve the safety plans as presented in closed session.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
I move to approve the filing of an appeal relating to the conditions the city has imposed on the construction project.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Sapursky. Do we need a voice vote for this?
Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Yang?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes 6 to none.
Thank you. All right, that...
So I move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Adjourned at...
We are adjourned at 8:36.
8:38. Yeah.